We have a closed session, any comment from the public?
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comment on closed session items, no written communication on closed session items.
All right.
We have one item, Mayor and Council, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, it's significant exposure to litigation, one case. Mr. Mayor, if you don't-
We'll recess, we'll be back.
We'll call real quick, Council Agency Authority Member Barrios is here, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor is here, Council Agency Authority Member Warren is absent currently. Mayor Protem Vice Chairman Torres is here, Mayor Chairman Chauvin is here. Thank you, council's convenient closed session at 5:37 PM and we'll return in open session at 6:30 PM.
Recession of the Stanton City Council at this particular time, would you please call roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Council Agency Authority Member Barrios, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor, Council Agency Authority Member Warren, Mayor Protem Vice Chairman Torres, and Mayor Chairman Chauvin.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Before we do the pledge, will we have a report out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, there's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. If you'll all please join us in the pledge, Frank, you get to lead the pledge tonight. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, special awards and presentations, tonight we have the distinct honor of recognizing Mr. Frank Meiser, who has reached his 100th birthday. You look better than me, you look better than your son-in-law too, okay? We have a couple of proclamations, we have one here from the city of Stanton, we have one from Tony Strickland, the state senator, and so we're going to give you a little recognition, so just please bear with us. Our Mayor Protem Donald Torres will be reading the proclamation.
City of Stanton Certificate of Recognition honoring the 100th birthday of Frank Meiser. The City Council of the City of Stanton congratulates Mr. Frank Meiser on attaining the distinction of reaching his 100th birthday. It is a pleasure to recognize Mr. Meiser on reaching this milestone in his life. Furthermore, the city extends to him our sincerest congratulations and best wishes for many more years of health and happiness. Awesome.
Before we have you come up for a Kodak moment, we would just like to thank you not only for being the service that you provide for our community, as you know, he owns the Magnolia Bird Farm. I think it's been there almost as long as I've been here, so it's very, very good. I know that it's hard for people to find food for their birds or other animals, especially some of the rare ones. I know that Donald here, he gets his bird food there, so it's gotta be okay. And also, I think the type of friendly environment, the people that work for you over the years, I know your family, it's a family-run business, has always stuck out to me as being very impressive. I think you care about your community, you care about the people that you help, and I wish you another 100 years. So if you'll please join us up here, we'll give you your, all your awards, okay? Get pens.
Test, test, test.
I'm not used to speaking, but anyway, Stanton, city of Stanton, I knew Stanton a long time ago, I was probably the first one here before anybody else in Stanton. In 1930, when I was five years old, I was given a whole lot of money, and I took it and walked about a quarter mile to the corner store, which was a service station, and also drugstore, and also a liquor store, and also a candy store, and also, it was, I think it was your first post office. It wasn't a post office, he had a thing in the back of the store, but it was, I forget the name of the store, of the, of the corner, of the service station, he had two pump stops on it, I think, and a man and his wife run it, and Whittakers or something like that, maybe?
Maybe Wagner's?
Wagner's or Whittakers, but anyway, nobody remembers that, the name of it, it was on the corner, southeast corner of Cerritos and Stanton, which is Beach Boulevard, and anyway, I had my uncle, I was five years old, my uncle gave me a penny. So I walked a quarter mile and bought me a Babe Ruth, and they were pretty big for a penny, I'll tell you that, but, but anyway, pennies weren't very popular at that time, nobody had them, 13 of them would get you a gallon of gases. So that was, other than that, that was the start of me being in Stanton. My uncle, Lee Benson, he used to be the night watchman at your hardware store, and I've been, I've been in the city of Stanton ever since they made the city of Stanton, I was there before the city of Stanton, but Anybody has any questions, I can ask them, but I've been back and forth to Stanton forever, and so, and I, where I'm in the city of Stanton, I have an Anaheim address. I was in the city of Anaheim, and they changed it to city of Stanton, I changed all my letters and everything else, and then they came out and said, no, the post office can't deliver you there, so you have to be delivered from Anaheim. So I am in the city of Stanton with Anaheim address, and I started, actually, I got my first resale permit in 1954, and so, and then, in many years, I've imported from every country, every continent, I mean, and so, right now, you can't import anymore, and so I'm not importing in bird, but we're still in business.
He comes into work five days a week.
Oh, yeah.
At least six to seven hour days.
Yeah, I do that, okay. But anyway, I've known Stanton for a long time, and anybody, nobody remembers, yes, sir?
What's your favorite bird species?
What?
Bird species, like your favorite type of bird?
Your favorite bird species, what type, your favorite bird?
Actually, I have to say a budgerigar, a parakeet, because that's what he started with. I started with, my girlfriend had a parakeet, and it bit me, but anyway, she wanted a few more, and so, a neighbor built her an aviary, and so I started buying her birds, and pretty soon, I was working on the Santa Fe Railroad, pretty soon, I was buying birds, going up, picking up, and I didn't have time to go to work, so I called up and told him I'd be in and retire. So I retired after five years at Santa Fe. But anyways, that, but I like roselas, and I like the cockatoos, but anyway, actually, parakeets is what did everything, built everything that I have, so, okay. I have a bird farm in, and I call it Anaheim, Stanton, and I have one in Riverside.
Okay, we're going to give you something memorable tonight, so just hang on. Okay, this is coming from all my fellow council members and the people on my staff, we're going to sing happy birthday to you.
That is something.
One, two, three. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Mark. I'm going to have a presentation, record the report and update from the OCFA.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember and City Staff. Thank you for this opportunity. Once again, my name is Danny Goodwin, I'm the Administrative Staff Captain for Division Seven, speaking on behalf of Division Chief Matthew Sheets. A quick explanation of this is, this is going to be a video, approximately six minutes, of what the Orange County Fire Authority has gone through the last quarter. So it's a summary of not only Stanton, you'll notice that's going to be all of our encompassing cities and unincorporated areas, so we wanted to give you a brief overview of what we're doing, not only for the city of Stanton, but for the county as a whole, and afterwards I'll be happy to answer any questions. And if we can, we'll begin the video.
I'm Fire Captain Sean Dorn, and this is the Corvay Sackel. In this edition of the OCFA- I'm Fire Captain Sean Dorn, and this is the Corvay Sackel. In this edition of-
About the state. With that being said, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey Chief, thank you for the video. Appreciate that. I did want to make an announcement while I have you here. I'm going to be working with Chief Lewin very shortly. I ran this by Chief Hennessy. We have the old that we had before it was refurbished, the oldest fire station in Orange County. It was called Fort Apache. I have the cornerstone that I've saved from Fort Apache. It has the names of all the original firefighters that served there. So, we're going to be building a monument there and have it placed there on that street, on Pacific, so that anytime any of our fire authority folks or the public, our firefighters, especially our new guys, come by, they can see a little bit of the history of that particular station. And I think it's be something that's going to be quite positive, not only for the OCFA, but also for the city of Stanton. Anyway, Chief, thank you very much for that report. All right, moving on. We're now at the Presentation Proclamation for Hunger Action Month in the city of Stanton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Stanton Proclamation, Hunger Action Month, September 2025. Now therefore let it be resolved that I, Donald Torres, Mayor of the City of Stanton, and David J. Schauer, Mayor of the City of Stanton, and on behalf of the entire City Council do hereby declare the month of September 2025 to be Hunger Action Month throughout the city of Stanton. And in doing so, encourage the citizens of this community to join with me to take part in creating change for the future in raising public awareness and education about the role and importance of food banks, food care, and the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues in every part of our community.
Thank you, Donald. At this time, come on up. Both of you guys come on up.
And we have Anthony Perez as well.
Okay, we'll start with Mark. Introduce yourself, tell us something about yourself, and Abound Care can also follow. Go ahead.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mark Lauer of the Orange County Food Bank. We will distribute 28 million pounds of food this year out of our warehouse just about two miles from this location, helping nearly 300,000 people each month with the help of 18,000 volunteers and thousands of additional food and financial donors. But we can't do that work alone, so we joined in partnership with the Orange County Hunger Alliance with Abound Food Care and Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County about seven years ago, recently inviting five other prominent Orange County nonprofits to join us on our steering committee. And we appreciate the attention of the city of Stanton in shining a spotlight on important issues that affect your residents in Orange County, like issues such as hunger.
My name's Anthony Perez. I work for Abound Food Care. I would just say, on behalf of Abound Food Care, the OC Food Bank, and our other OC Hunger Alliance partners, working to reduce food insecurity in Orange County, as well as the estimated 360,000 people still struggling with constant access to nutritious foods in Orange County. I'd like to thank Mayor Schauer, the city of Stanton, and the entire City Council for calling attention to Hunger Action Month. And we encourage everyone to help in any way that they can by supporting their nonprofits here in the city of Stanton. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to put a footnote in. Between these two gentlemen here, that's where majority of the food I get for our food drive, and also the city was the recipient. You know, they're very generous with us. Sometimes it's harder to get some things, but we end up sharing some of what we get with what they get, and it works out really well. You know, sometimes you take a look, and the leadership is great, and they do a great job, but also the staff that they have and all the many, many volunteers that help. I'll also please thank them because this recognition is for all of your volunteer services also. And we appreciate the service that you provide our community and all of Orange County. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, gentlemen, come up for a Kodak moment.[297.02]
Last year, state contractor associations found out that muralists who are doing murals in cities are actually operating outside the law. They were supposed to be registered by the Department of Industrial Relations and have a state contractor's license, but we all know that that's not exactly the theme of a muralist, of a local muralist who's doing something out of park or on a wall. So, we, local governments, CalCity sponsored this bill to get that clarified in state law to help protect those local muralists. So, a really good win for local governments, frankly. It's maybe not as impactful on the grand scheme, but something that's good to see that we were able to mobilize and get done. And that's currently on the governor's desk for his decision. One other bill I don't have on here, and I apologize, I should have added it, but SB 707 from Senator DeRazo is a bill we had on a couple months ago, but this is a big bill that's going to change how the Brown Act is done in public meetings like this. So, the biggest change is that it's going to require two-way communication between the city and the public during any open council meeting. So, you're going to have to, you would have to, because of the size of your county, we're in an urban, large county, we would have to offer a public comment online to the public during our council meetings. Not for every committee, not for Planning Commission, not for any other thing besides open council meetings. So, accepting a two-way conversation with the public for anyone calling in or on like a Zoom platform, for example. So, that is a big change to what we're currently doing right now. And then another big change is we're going to have to translate our agendas into specific languages that are spoken by 20% or more of our population who do not speak English very well. So, that will, I'm guessing that's one, maybe two languages here that you would have to, staff would have to translate agendas into. So, it will be some additional staff costs. I will say, we worked really hard on this bill behind the scenes at TPA. We have a lot of, obviously, all of our clients are being affected by this. We were able to secure some pretty good amendments, I would say, about a six-month implementation timeline to help city staff really get their feet under them as opposed to January, and as well as some other, using American Community Survey data, lowering that number of languages you have to translate to. So, we're pretty proud of the efforts we've done. I know it's going to be a burden on Trish, and I apologize, but it is, I think, the best deal that was out there, and I think that everyone should be ready for it, as it is going to come. I'm fully expecting it to pass. Okay, moving on to DC. In federal, since we last talked, our, one of our earmarks was chosen and included in the T-HUD appropriations bill and passed. So, Congressman Correa included our community center, senior center project. He requested a million dollars. It got cut down to $250,000, but it was included and passed in the T-HUD appropriations bill. So, what that means for us now is we are at the whim of the federal budget once again. So, we are in the same position as we ended last year, where we had this project, again, included. I think it was for half a million last year, or maybe a full million, but now we're in the same exact position for $250,000, just waiting on a full budget package in DC to pass. So, if earmarks are included nationwide, we will be included. If not, then everyone will go back to the drawing board again next year. And then, last slide here, staying with the theme of DC, not a lot going on compared to Sacramento right now in DC, but still some very significant movements when it comes to the federal budget, as I just talked about. We're seeing a lot of budget reconciliation talk to, which is the loophole term we use for dodging the filibuster in the Senate, where you don't need the 60 votes anymore, which is usually why nothing happens in DC. So, Republicans can basically self-legislate now without any Democrat votes. It's still a slow process, but we're seeing that loophole being utilized across the board. We do think there's a continuing resolution on the table that's going to take our federal funding year that ends on September 30th to maybe Thanksgiving, is what we're thinking. From there, we'll see if negotiators are going to be able to get it together, or if they're going to have to extend again. My guess is going to be right before Christmas, is my crystal ball, but we'll have to wait and see. Anytime throughout that process, any of those CRs could include our earmarks. So, we're keeping an eye on that and hoping that, at one point, when they keep kicking the can down the road, they're going to kick the can with a string attached that's going to have earmarks with it, and we're going to be really happy. So, with that, I'll take any questions about anything going on in Sacramento or DC.
So, go back to the back slide with Correa's money, Padilla's money, and it's in red, so we didn't even, can you explain the red?
Yeah, thank you. I should have, I should have went through that. So, Senator Padilla included our security camera project that we submitted in his request to the committee, but the committee decided not to include it. So, it's positive, it's positive to be on your senator's radar to even include it. He didn't even, he did not choose that many in that account for the state. So, we were maybe one of a dozen or two that were on his list to be able to submit to the committee for that, for that, it's called the CJS committee, but we were not included in the bill. So, there's nothing to expect from that anymore, except that it's positive that he at least chose us as a possibility for funding.
Did that happen to, for the city in the past, or?
It has, it has. There's several years in a row, some of your projects have been chosen by, I mean, it goes back to Feinstein, Padilla, Schiff. A lot of your senators have chosen our projects that have not been in the committee. And the reason for that is that the Senate just has a very poor percentage when it comes, like a batting average in terms of how many projects they put forward and how many they get back. Whereas the House, I know that you remember, because we were in DC together, the House gets 15 to put forward, and they generally get all 15 back. So, that's the difference between the two bodies. That's a good question. Thank you.
Then I have a quick question. Have we seen any update on the mental health component of Prop 36?
There, I have seen a update on the rollout of Prop 36, as it relates to care courts and all of the, all that money that's stacking up. I know that the rollout is not as positive as they expected, and I don't, I don't have an update for you beyond that. I would encourage you to reach out to the county, or I can do it on your behalf, to get an update on what our county is doing, but I know that it has been slow to get off the ground compared to what everyone maybe thought last year or the year before.
Any other questions? Eric, thank you as always, very thorough, and the target keeps moving. We appreciate the fact that you keep trying on our behalf, and the things that you've been able to gain for us over the past, we greatly appreciate. So, please let Chris know-
Thank you.
-how much your hard work is being very effective for us. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Okay, we're at our consent calendar. Who?
More special presentation item. 8E, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at the council's request, we'll get our homeless report.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. As the council is aware, for years, the city has been working on addressing issues related to homelessness. Most of this effort happens on a daily basis out of view of our residents and businesses. To ensure more transparency into our efforts and to better inform the community regarding the resources the council has directed to address these issues, I will be providing a monthly report on homeless outreach and other activities. For those interested in reviewing past reports, you can find those beginning in 2021 on the city's website at www.stantonca.gov, under the Public Safety Department. The reports represent a very high-level summary of the efforts of over 10 employees who are dedicated in some manner to addressing homelessness-related issues. Tonight's report is for August 2025. For the month of August, the city engaged in 139 proactive total client encounters, with 25 of those being new client engagements. The team received 165 contacts from homeless individuals, advocates, service providers, and the Orange County Sheriff's Department for service assistance, coordination, and navigation. For the month of August, 118 offers of shelter were declined. Staff did receive 20 requests for shelter, but shelter beds were unavailable at the time of those requests. Two individuals were connected with interim housing opportunities, one with primary care services, and three with benefits assistance. The highest priority areas in the city for August, based on calls and field observations, were Veterans Park, Stanton Park, and Zuniga Park. We have three real-life stories to share with the council. So, during my last monthly update, I had some stories that maybe showed the very realistic difficulties in offering services to our individuals experiencing homelessness. I'm happy that tonight's report includes three stories with somewhat happy endings. So, our outreach coordinators received a referral call from City Hall staff regarding a female and her partner who were seeking shelter. The female client was informed that due to the time of day, no shelter beds were available, and that she would need to be available in the morning to complete the intake process and have the best chance of securing a bed. The next day, the female client showed up and followed through with her request, completed all the necessary intake steps, and was successfully transported to a shelter by the Hope Center. Her partner did not complete the process, and as a result, he was not provided with a shelter opportunity. Our second story features our outreach coordinators again, who have been engaged for many years with a female member of the homeless community. Despite a complicated past that includes personal tragedies and multiple legal issues, she is usually cooperative and very pleasant to deal with. With support from our outreach coordinators, she was able to attend legal appointments to address outstanding warrants, which were previously barriers to her accessing housing opportunities and critical resources. Now that, now with those warrants cleared, she can focus on securing housing and rebuilding her life. The outreach team will remain in contact with her and provide support as needed. And finally, our outreach coordinators have been engaged with another female member of the homeless community since 2022. The female's partner has been reluctant to accept shelter services over the years, and has served as a barrier for her to accept her own services. However, recently, the female client reached out to outreach staff on her own to pursue shelter services. The client diligently participated in the intake process and was successfully placed at the Illumination Foundation Shelter. The client has been receiving assistance with transportation and wraparound services. She has been at the location successfully for two weeks and is fully engaged in the programming provided at the facility, and continues to work towards placement on the permanent supportive housing list. While the city has allocated significant resources to outreach and has worked diligently to connect individuals to appropriate resources, the city does not tolerate antisocial or illegal behavior regardless of the perpetrator. As such, the city, through its code enforcement, public works, and Orange County Sheriff's Department contract, continues to enforce all violations of the city's municipal code and state law to the full extent of the law. That concludes my report for this evening, and I am available to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, we're now moving on to the consent calendar. All items can be taken with one motion. I believe we have items.
A through I.
A through I. Does anybody wish to pull anything? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on any of the agenda items for consent calendar? Have received any correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, for consent calendar, we have none.
Okay. Is there a motion? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Thank you. That passes. All right, moving on. Our next topic is public hearings, item number 10A. This is a resolution of the City Council adopting and incorporating a commercial cannabis business assignment fee to the City of Stanton Master Fee Schedule. Go ahead, HD.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 10A is a resolution regarding a cannabis business assignment fee of $22,566.99 into the City of Stanton Master Fee Schedule. The Stanton Municipal Code has specific rules for the transfer of cannabis permits. The public policy behind the transfer of these type of permits was, once the city opened the program and provided the permits, the ideas that the city was very careful in selecting these permittees, they went through a rigorous review and application process, so that the four permits that were provided were carefully selected. And the idea was that the city did not want them to be immediately transferred or sold onto the street for the highest bidder, essentially. And so, the Stanton Municipal Code provides that typically transfers are only allowed after four years of continuous operation. However, there are provisions that acknowledge there may be times when a transfer is appropriate prior to the four-year conclusion. And so, the outline of allowed transfers is that 85% of a cannabis permit business may be transferred in the first two years, and 100% of the permit operations and management, whatnot, may be transferred after four years. However, to be able to transfer a cannabis permit, business permit, there are standards that the city manager would have to review. They'd have to have the same level or better of business operations. They'd have to have the same level of experience or better experience or more experience. They'd have to have the same amount of funding. They would have to go through rigorous background checks. And almost importantly, they would have to go through almost the same application process as an initial permittee would have had to go through initially. As I mentioned, that was a very rigorous process, where applicants were required to provide security plans, operation plans, and, you know, prove that they had the expertise and quality to be able to run a successful cannabis business within the City of Stanton. And so, given that this is a very labor-intensive review, the city undertook a study to look at how much it would cost to be able to review an application for a cannabis business permit operator who wanted to transfer that business, and came up with $22,566.98. Much of that time would be spent by the Community Development Department. That would be accepting the application, reviewing the application, interacting with the applicant to ensure that the questions and the answers are being provided appropriately, reviewing it, providing a staff report, prepping it for public hearing, and ultimately bring it before the city manager for a decision at a public hearing. There is some time, as noted in the staff report, for legal review and other administrative review as well. And so, the item before you is to approve the fee of $22,566.98 into the Stanton Master Fee Schedule. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on item 10A? A hearing done, close to the public hearing, bring it back to the council. I'll entertain a motion for the recommended action, one and two. Roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, a second by Mayor Protem Torres. I'll now proceed with the roll call vote. Councilmember Warren? Councilmember Barrios? Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Torres? And Mayor Chauver?
Yes.
Thank you. Item passes 5-0.
We have no unfinished business. We have new business. This is a voting delegate and alternate for the California League of Cities coming up October 8th through the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, that is for the appointment of a voting delegate and voting delegate alternate for the 2025 Annual League of California Cities Conference, which again will be held this October in the City of Long Beach. At this meeting, the league membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish league policy. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, the city must, the City Council must designate a voting delegate and a voting delegate alternate. The recommended action for this evening, that City Council find this item is not subject to CEQA, select a voting delegate and a voting delegate alternate to serve as the city's representative at the conference, and direct the voting delegate and voting delegate alternate to review and determine the city's position on each proposed petition resolutions. We haven't received the resolution packet yet. It will come out, but at this evening, we are asking council to provide direction so that the voting delegates can represent the city's position at the business meeting. We have Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Barrios, Mayor Protem Torres, and Mayor Chauver attending this year. Typically, when it's local, we get a bigger turnout. So, that concludes staff's report, and we are available to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
I would like to recommend, I'm going to be a speaker at the convention, and also I'm currently serving as the president of the league. So, I would appreciate it if we have Donald Torres represent the city as the Mayor Protem. And I think Donald would be a great experience, but he'll do a great job. So, that would be my first recommendation. So, depending on which of you two would like to duke it out. Okay, so, we have a recommendation for our representative to be our voting delegate will be Donald Torres. Alternate will be John Warren. Is there a motion?
I'll motion it.
Are you opposed?
We should pack it out too, as soon as it's received. 5-0. Correct, sir. Three minutes. We have received no request. No written request either, sir.
For future council meeting?
15A is for any announcements from the council.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah. All right, and then, anything, any announcements?
We have been having a lot of mosquito activity, with West Nile virus being present in a lot of birds and other traps that vector control has been setting. Stanton hasn't actually had an issue at this point, but Garden Grove, Westminster, Cypress, Anaheim, all around us have. So, it's a little bit frightening, but just as a warning, we should be sure and use some kind of protective spray when you're out. These ankle biters like to actually get your ankles. They fly close to the ground, and they do sting, and most of the time, it's not a problem, but every now and then, some of these diseases can be very serious. So, word to the wise.
Any other comments? Go ahead, John.
Yeah. I wanted to thank our Community Services Department for our beautiful new website that we have that launched today. Love the color scheme, and I'm happy to see the rebranding taking effect there. And then, I wanted to state that I attended last Thursday, the CalCity's division meeting, and I would encourage the mayor, if he would like to expand upon that and talk about the meeting. The CalCity's meeting.
I can't hear what you're saying.
The CalCity is meeting at Crystal Banquet.
Oh, thank you.
Could you talk about it? Yeah. It was a good meeting.
Did you want to give any additional information to the Family Resource Center's open house?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this Friday, we are having a variety of vendors, performances from some youth groups over at the Family Resource Center from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. A chance for families to meet with partner agencies, learn about resources and programs, and we're inviting all of the council and the public to come enjoy some tacos as well.
On announcements. Okay, anything for a future meeting? Okay, I have a couple. I would like to maybe have our Finance Department give us a short report at our next council meeting on our UAL. As you know, the actuaries now have gone through and they made their predictions. We have a pretty good idea of what the investment pool is. We know what the life expectancy is, but I would like to maybe see where we are with our UAL. That's always a good thing to keep track of. It should be a very short report. That's unfunded liability. Are we all okay with it? Okay, thanks. All right, and number two would be, I'd like to add to agenda for discussion of Proposition 50. That's it.
Again, Mr. Mayor, you said 50, 5-0? Correct. Thank you, sir.
Anything else, folks? All right. Future study session. Okay, well, item 15D, this is a council-initiated item discussion regarding renters' rights. Mr. Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honestly, I felt like I should have agendized this a long time ago, but walking and talking to my community members in our district, especially right across the street from our neighborhood, I've noticed a lot of residents complaining about the quality of the landlords and how they keep up the areas of the apartment complexes. I've had residents complain about mold. So, I have seen the other cities around us, like Buena Park and Anaheim, have focused efforts on trying to strengthen their renters' rights laws and things like that. So, what I would like to do, and I hope that council supports me on this, is that if we could have a study session, we could look at what is easily applicable, what is, what are steps that we can take so we could be on par to basically the rest of the cities around us.
Okay. Just let me follow up with that. I, that was a, that was a request that was made by Councilman Mayor Protem Torres. So, what I did is, I went through and I, I got this document, which basically shows what Stanton renters' rights are. And it covers quite a bit of things, especially some of the things that he mentioned about safe and habitual, habitable, repair, things like that. And it also has the different jurisdictions that can help with it, whether it's the California Department of Justice, California Civil Rights Department, Fair Housing Council of Orange County, also the California Courts, and legal aid, which is also available. I'm, I'm not real sure what the direction you would like, or what kind of enforcement, do we need ordinances, or I'm not sure. Could you expand a little bit, please?
Yeah, of course. So, for example, there are cities around us that require landlords to go ahead and submit a request for eviction, and what the city does is that they make sure that everything is within legal parameters. Now, I'm not looking for that specifically, but that's just one example. What I would like, or what the direction I would like to do, is research cities around us, see what we can implement, what's feasible. I hope that staff could present on it, and then we make a decision as a council on what we can do. I just feel like, historically, we've dropped the ball on this subject, and I think it would be good if we can just get an analysis and see how we're doing on this issue. I do like the list that you made. I would really appreciate it if we could get this, like, on a webpage, you know, because this is simple information that everybody should know. I think what this would do is reinforce the dynamic within our renters to understand that, you know, they do have rights. You know what I mean? So, I like how you put this together very quickly. I think something like this, to have a page and then also do a study session would be pretty good. But I would like, you know, city, city staff to go ahead and make something where we can give residents information about their rights. And honestly, there's a lot of misinformation out there, so I think it would be good to have, you know, something from an authoritative source to reinforce these laws.
Okay, I'm going to support that recommendation to get this on our website. Also, I think it's good that we get it through all our social media, letting people know what the rights are available to the people here in Stanton. All of us also have our own mechanism to get it out, so if you're a council member and you feel comfortable, I know, Gary, you post a lot, John posts, and I think the more we get it out and make this available to everyone, it would be a good stepping out direction. I think before I want to spend staff time and energy on it, I'd like to see if that is effective, and if we get some kind of response. I think besides just posting it, I think we should also give them some sort of a contact here in the city, that they could call in or email in to the city if they need additional information. And then, we can provide that for those that need it or feel they need it. Go ahead, Gary.
I'm not really familiar with this, but what if somebody had, you know, a mold problem, and the landlord wouldn't do anything about it? Who do they go to right now?
Well, there's about four different ways. You can start with county health. That's a good one. Yeah, county health is very, and then they have the state agency. They have-
So, it gets done. State would probably take a long time.
Yeah, but you gotta realize also, there is state law that mandates if, that mold, let's say you actually find mold. If you don't report it, there's a giant monster fine for it. So, so all these agencies are intertwined, and they work together. But I think the list here is a good start for people to have. It's kind of like what we did for people that wanted some issues with the rent. We put that document out to everybody, and they were able to go to sources to get some assistance.
During the pandemic?
This was recently. We had a group that were interested-
Oh, the-
-in helping with rent subsidy. So, we gave them that, and we had that posted- so we gave them that, and we had that posted, and those folks have, I've gotten some feedback that they were able to contact these different groups, and some of the folks that were qualified were able to get that help. I think if we use the same pattern for this, it will be a good way to start, and then we can bring it back and reevaluate whether it was effective or not, or if we need to expand this to where we can do it. I think there's enough enforcement just in this document to at least get us started.
What do you think of, what is the most common problem you're hearing out there? You're really close to some of the residents, obviously. What is the most common problems that, and that they don't know about how to fix it? How to reach a contact or whatever?
So, I will say, there's a lot of laws that renters could take advantage of, but the issue is that when it comes to your home, right, where you live and things like that, there's an inequitable dynamic between the landlord and the renter, and a lot of times renters are scared to speak up in fear of, let's say, retaliation of rent increases or whatnot. So that's why, unless if you have a large access of funds to be able to go through litigation, I don't think you could really, like, let's say, push on a landlord that doesn't listen, right? So what I would like to do is make sure that every landlord is in compliance, you know what I mean? I would like to make sure that we...
With compliance of what?
To basically maintain the apartment complexes, how they should to code. So, I will say this, and I don't know if this is still happening now, but when I would go ahead and knock on some apartment complexes, I saw at least two units with broken windows and broken locks on the doors. So I don't know if they fixed it now, I'm pretty sure they would, but that's something that really stood out to me, you know what I mean? So, if we look at what other cities are doing, we see why they did it, right? There's a need, right, for representation, and then also education on what rights they have, I think that we could help our residents, especially on misinformation and educating them.
Maybe a hotline for when the landlords don't react to a specific issue or something? They would have some way to contact a hotline or something like that? This might be a lot for some of the renters to go through, that's the only thing I'm worried about. Some of our renters, we'd have to put this in the different languages and things, too. This seems pretty thorough, I like it.
Well, I think the nice thing about this is that...
I know. We don't want to be called all the time.
No, I'm talking about us, the city.
In the county that a renter can call, is there a hotline in the county or anything like that? That's what I'm wondering about.
A lot of times you can call two-one-one.
One, that's... I know, but what is that?
That's the one that covers just about everything from housing to food, to resources, for the whole county.
I think the problem is, we need to educate more people what their rights are. I mean, I'm listening to their conversation, and Gary doesn't know what two-one-one is, and I mean, and there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with that, because we all don't know everything, but I think putting it on the website and putting it somewhere where it's renters' rights, so it's, when you open it, it's right there, because sometimes I go on pages, I had to text John today, I was looking for something on the website, and I'm like, where is it? Where is it, John? Where is this? And he sent it to me, and it took a long time for me, and I'm pretty active with, you know, the internet, so I think if we could put it on the webpage, put it right there, renters' rights, and then put the listing and the link so they can log in, and then, again, there's a Facebook, and then we can share with people, hey, this is the link, this is where you can get any contacted information, because, again, you talk, everybody has a different concern, you talk about mold, broken windows, so it's, not everything could be for, fits one, you know, all for one. So I just think them having access and us educating them on what their rights are, and again, there are some people that don't want to post, they don't want people to know their name, they want to keep it anonymous.
Yeah, you know, a lot of people are dissuaded from doing that because they think that their landlord will be retaliatory.
Yes.
And that's what, that's one of the messages that we need to get out, that, you know, if you're really having a problem, don't be afraid to contact and let people know, because it's usually held in strict confidence. You know, I mean, I think the landlord, you know, the landlord would probably figure it out, but yet, you know, we have that enigma, and then we have the people that don't understand where they can get the help, and we really haven't done a good job letting people know where they can go to get help. I think the best thing that we decided to do is when we put up our rental assistance program, for everybody to be able, if you get a copy of it, we also posted it at all of the mobile home parks in Stanton, so, and the managers have it. So I think this is something that if we follow the same guidelines, at least take a look at it, we can see how effective it is.
So, definitely, this is a good thing. I do want to stress that we should do research, especially around the other cities. I want to make sure we do have consistent enforcement, we also have consistent rights across the board. I am worried that sometimes, we don't know if people get evicted and our demographics change rapidly or not, you know, and I think some cities have the luxury of seeing, you know, their demographics and their renters and the state and the health of their city, but I think that we should just at least progress a little bit on this.
HD, excuse me, John, just give me, the city would have no control over eviction case, that's, I mean, they can't bring that before us, can they? What can we do about it?
Mayor and Council defer to the city manager on some of those points. Typically, eviction cases are private landlord-tenant items, and so, you know, I personally have not done a ton of research on kind of these renter rights, given that the item was today, but my general experience is that landlord-tenant items are private, privately handled.
So it's better if we go to either federal, state, or local, or to the county government that has these types of programs, right, in place?
I believe that the county has services. Typically, landlord-tenant items would be handled at the state court level, it usually doesn't rise to the federal level, but typically it would be a state and county issue, and I, you know, if the city manager has anything to add.
To the specific question...
There's a lot of protections about getting evicted, you can't just throw somebody out.
Like I said, a lot of times, most renters have a lot of rights that they don't know about, and a lot of times...
So this would be a good start.
It would, and, yeah, that's why I agree, and I would like the supplemental research, just to make sure we're going in the right direction.
Would it be okay if we start with this, then, maybe? In three languages, Vietnamese, Spanish, and English, maybe?
Council, as much as I appreciate the research document, if we're going to post something on our website, I want to make sure it's accurate and vetted, so the California State Department of Justice, through their Office of the Attorney General, already has a document on their website that is vetted and titled "Know Your Rights as a California Tenant," so I would recommend that, you know, city staff are not experts in this area, and it is an ever-changing area, so we should refer back to agencies that have the resources to maintain expertise. Our Code Enforcement Division also handles a lot of these types of calls and knows the appropriate resources to direct them to, so first, I would recommend if you would like to post something on the website, we use this Attorney General Consumer Alert, and then second, we are also, it may already be on our website, where with the transition, we're confirming what is and is not on there, but we have a very great resource for both landlords and tenants already at the county, and that's through the Fair Housing Council of OC, and their initial consultation services are complimentary, there's no cost initially, so again, we would want to provide those links and resources, we wouldn't want to generate any content ourselves, so I'm happy to have staff work on that, again, utilizing the existing resources from agencies that are experts in this area.
Yeah, there is a housing committee for the county, and actually, it might be a couple of openings, so if you're interested, let me know, but I think that's a good place to start, because this is what the types of things they do, so we could reach out to them also. Go ahead, John.
No, I was just going to concur as a first step, that we look at what options are already available, and a lot of people don't know what the rights are, as was pointed out by several members up here. For instance, you know, when Councilmember Torres was handing out the red cards, helping citizens know their rights, and those are, those were very basic, fundamental rights, and, you know, I think it's a really good, real good start to start with that. What do we have now? Get an understanding of it and get that out there before, I mean, really, before taking next steps, because one can be done immediately, the other is going to take time, staff time, come back in the future. So I don't know if I'm asking to bifurcate this, but I think one can be accomplished quicker than the other.
So, I think the, I think the direction we give staff is to go ahead and to take a look at what is available out there, and how best under what we can do legally to help assist in getting the word out.
And can we look at other cities as well?
Pro Tem Torres, if you'd like to make a motion and...
So I would like to make a motion to direct staff to make a webpage under the moving to Stanton category of surrounding renters' rights, easily available information that everybody could get.
Could it be renters' and landlord rights?
Sure, sure. And then also separately, look into things that our neighbors are doing as well, and then we can get a presentation, a study session on it, and then just come back and talk about it.
A second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Thank you. All right, moving on, we're now on item fifteen E. This is a city council-initiated item discussion regarding temporary contract for security services.
As I handed out the, what I typed up, talking about private security, why temporary armed private security can help deter crime in cities by increasing the perceived risk for potential offenders and complementing public police efforts, though the specific impact can vary by location and strategy. Effective private security contributes to safety through visible patrols, enhanced monitoring and surveillance, and by providing additional eyes and ears on the ground to report suspicious activities. Private security may promote the enforcement of city municipal codes through awareness and educational efforts in the interest of public safety. Where/location: city parks, public facilities, and public right-of-ways. When: Thursday 6:00 p.m. through Monday 6:00 a.m., and one additional fuller day is needed for public safety and quality of life issues. Holidays: when city halls closed or as a needed basis. Two guards or one guard per shift to start with the potential to increase as needed to ensure community safety and quality. Duration: temporary six-month trial period, and staff/council can evaluate effectiveness of the program. Approach: stay-in-vehicle, use loudspeaker vehicle PA system and security lights to patrol city parks, public facilities, and public right-of-ways. Security guards should be unarmed and carry only pepper spray, a common tool used to temporarily incapacitate or deter an aggressor for cell protection. Unarmed security guards will utilize cell phones to make emergency and non-emergency calls to Orange County Sheriff's Department dispatch, or communicate with other private security guard employees. Flashlights, which is a durable flashlight, helps guards to see in dark areas, can be used for inspection. ID badges, essential for identifying the guard as authorized security personnel, and first aid kits. Temporary unarmed security guards may use pen, paper, and body cameras to document incidents, maintain logs, and provide evidence if needed. Guards need to be fully aware of their legal boundaries and duties, along with city municipal codes. Set and enforce minimum training and ethical standards for all security personnel. How private security deters crime? Visible deterrent: the presence of uniformed private security guards in marked vehicles or at specific locations acts as a visible deterrent, making criminals think twice about targeting a protected area. Proactive deterrence: the visible presence of private security patrols can deter potential code violations before they occur. Community confidence: a visible security presence reassures residents, businesses, and visitors. Helps attract tourism and investment by projecting a safer city environment. Increased surveillance: private guards monitor areas for suspicious activity, identify risks, and provide a constant presence, disrupting unlawful acts before they escalate. Complementing code enforcement: private security augments the city's code enforcement department for preservation of public safety and quality of life. They serve as additional observers on the ground, sharing valuable insights and monitoring potential threats, which supports and expands the reach of public policing efforts. Community trust and perception: in many cases, private security presence leads to a more positive perceptions of safety among residents and businesses, even if crime reduction isn't always directly linked to the guard's actions. Examples of effective private security: cities that have utilized private security in the past or are currently, San Juan Capistrano, Lakewood, Los Angeles, San Diego, and Garden Grove is in the process. Conclusions: so, do securities reduce crime? Based on current research and real-world evidence, the answer is yes, especially when they are trained, visible, and used strategically. They're not a replacement for police or code enforcement, but they are an important part of modern public, of a modern public safety system when properly trained and work in partnership with all stakeholders to benefit public safety and quality of life. When we move forward with this item, we must focus on quality and professionalism. A well-trained guard can do more than just watch a door, they can offer peace of mind, reduce risk, and contribute to a safer environment for our community. When combined with public systems and clear policies, private security services have the potential to make a real impact on crime prevention and community public safety, as well as our residents' quality of life. While our law enforcement officers remain dedicated to protecting residents and maintaining order, the demands on their services have increased significantly due to rising population, expanded community events, and heightened safety challenges. This initiative is not a replacement for our police services, but rather a strategic partnership that enhances our commitment to public safety and peace of mind for residents, businesses, and visitors. By supplementing our public safety resources, we aim to create a safer, more welcoming environment for all stakeholders in our city. I believe this measure will strengthen community confidence, reduce the likelihood of crime, and provide additional assurances that public safety remains a top priority for the city of Stanton. I am asking Mayor Chauvin and my fellow council to support issuing an RFP for temporary private security services to address the growing concerns regarding public safety in our community. While our law enforcement officers remain dedicated to protecting residents and maintaining order, the demands on their services have increased significantly. And that's it for me.
Questions?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we just add a few, you're talking about only one or two guards, why wouldn't we just add a couple of public safety people to patrol at night?
We can compare the cost if needed. Okay, so you're, okay, what type of services are you talking about, Gary?
Driving around, spotting things, we have lights on the cars, we flash, they can take, you know, they can take notes. I don't think we take notes or anything now, but if you wanted that, I'm sure they could do that. Have some control, at least a little bit, that's one. How are you going to measure the success? Just by what, I mean, is there anything that we can actually measure success by that's numeric or something, where we can really not just perceive it, but actually say that it's really being done with facts and figures?
We could measure data, we could have them track the data as far as violations. I think data is important to keep, because, again, we can, it'll keep track and make sure they're doing their job, what we're asking them to do, and that would be...
What kind of data is that?
We can have written data.
Okay, but I mean, what do you, what do you want them to report on? How many times they call the sheriffs?
No.
How many people they move around? I mean, you know, as soon as they drive away, some of these issues that you see might just appear right back there again. They're not law enforcement.
Correct, and they're not... They're not here to be law enforcement, they're just additional eyes and ears. So, for example, data-wise, if they come in contact with someone who's illegally using drugs, right, they report it, and of course, they would call the sheriffs. Sheriff's... Sheriffs would do what they have to do.
Would they be able to tell illegal drugs from the car? I know if you see the smoke, I guess, in the paper, if they're, if they're smoking stuff. I don't know.
I couldn't answer that because it was, it's all different. I mean, if they're vaping, is it, was it that vaping?
Yeah, whether they're vaping, so.
Right.
This worries me a lot. And the other thing that worries me is we don't have the money for this. Our budget, we're deficit now, and it's getting bigger. We added the sheriff's contract. We added the raise for the employees, which is, they deserve it. I don't disagree with that. It's just we didn't have the money for it. We're still paying some money on other projects that we've got that we've kind of pushed forward on that, but we didn't have the money to do it. I just think this is spending money that we don't have to spend.
When you say, so you look at our city now and the concerns of our residents, of all the illegal activity that's occurring.
I think it's, you don't think it's gotten a lot better in the last couple of months?
It has gone a lot better with the sheriff's department, but...
And I think you have to realize it's never going to be perfect.
It's not. But are we going to say, okay, that's it? Or do we want to continue to make it better without putting additional strain on our police department? It's just the ear, it's just eyes and ears. It's just help support municipal codes. It's also temporary. It's not going to be, you know, all year.
Okay, how much, how much is this going to cost for a six-month trial?
Six-month trial, that's a good question, so...
I figured you had it.
Based on what I have in my written proposal, it is approximately ninety hours.
Okay.
So, that, per week, per week.
Wow.
Now, ninety times...
That's two full-time people technically, and then plus some more.
Or we can go as eight six-hour shifts and let cities, our city manager determine where we need those, which reduces it to forty-eight hours, which is almost half.
What are the two amounts?
So, based on, what is, what is a number of that? Does anybody know money-wise per hour?
Fifty dollars an hour, would that be ballpark?
We currently pay our private parking enforcement forty-seven dollars an hour. So, if you're projecting at the hours that Councilmember Barrios projected for a six-month trial period, it would be just under one hundred ten thousand dollars or forty-two hundred dollars a week. And that's at the ninety hour.
And if we did it the forty-eight hour, which gives us eight six-hour shifts, forty-eight times fifty, twenty-four hundred a week.
It's just a lot of money that we don't have to spend. And I don't see any way to quantify it, to actually, I mean, just people telling us things. I see the emails on John's website and stuff. I mean, some of the, and we get emails to ourselves. It's just, you know, I see this, I see this, but there's no way to really quantify it. There's always going to be crime, I think, or quality of life issues in any city, especially one that's close to Beach Boulevard. I just think we ought to get the, I think the sheriffs are actually going to get better at what they're doing as they become more experienced and they get better trained. They all know our city. Once the deputies have broken in a little more than two months, they're going to really know a lot of things.
And you don't, you wouldn't like to offer additional support?
I would love it if we could afford it. I would, I would love to keep it in-house, though.
Okay, so your, your main concern is the money it costs, and I agree, right, the cost.
I don't think we can afford it. I don't see the actual great benefit of it. If you get a, and you don't know what kind of people you're going to be getting. I don't know how we're going to supervise them. I mean, I've seen guards just sit down at Starbucks and drink coffee all night. I mean, I just, it seems like there's an awful lot of issues here that we don't know how to deal with. It, it sounds good. I don't disagree with what you want to do. We want to make the city perfect almost, but I think we're going in the right direction. I don't think we'll ever be perfect. I think we ought to let our law enforcement do law enforcement.
Well, this is, and this is, Gary, if they're not doing their job, right? Because...
Who?
The private security.
Oh, private security.
Yeah. We have HD in the contracts or a, you know...
But how do you not know how they're doing, if they're not doing their, how are you going to know that?
Gary, you can't look in the, around the city and tell me, okay, we'll take certain areas, parks. You don't know, oh, go ahead, Gary.
What I'll say is that it's really important to make sure that we have some type of metrics to measure the efficacy of this program if we were to go for it. But I will say that our community had a lot of concerns, especially with our homeless community. And what we did is we went ahead and we responded by spending over a million dollars in our sheriff's contract. And we're still seeing the...
One point six million.
One point six, and we're still seeing the differences today, right? But if our worry are things like Stanton Park and our sheriffs, you know, are struggling to deal with that, I don't think private security is going to deal with it much better. Apart from making calls from things that, you know, apart from having a private security officer patrolling in a car, I think that we've all wanted from sheriffs, not them to just patrol in cars, to actually get out, engage with the community and stuff like that. So, I don't think that having private security just stay in a car patrol is going to do any, any much of a bigger difference if we're struggling to, you know, have people be more, more involved when it comes to enforcement.
And you know, and I see both of your points, but on the other hand, it's, again, it's additional eyes and ears for the community. I understand the cost is significant, right? But in order to continue to make our city and community safer, this is just another tool that we could utilize.
My biggest issue is that we could be spending this money on, let's say, overtime for our public safety, even if we were, even if we were designed to spend money. If we would hire a public safety officer, at least they could issue citations, right? If it was one of our code enforcement guys that we would pay overtime, at least they can give out citations. At least they can enforce our municipal code. But a private security guard wouldn't be able to enforce a municipal code.
And Hannah, how, how much for, what's the cost versus compare and contrast?
I wouldn't recommend going the overtime route. I believe our staff is pretty burnt out, so it would be really hard to have consistent overtime for the amount of coverage. So, I would recommend instead going with a part-time temporary job opening that...
Two twenty-four hour a week people cost, that's about right. That's what you wanted, right?
I'm looking it up right now.
Let me check. If you're worried about the cost, I'm just listening to what you gentlemen were talking about. Probably the simplest way to be cost-effective is that because on occasion we have low-priority calls, quality of life, low-priority calls, which are low priority and our, our law enforcement don't have the opportunity to get out a lot of times. If you were just having on-call service to where they would be able to go out and help in a situation with a quality of life issue on an as-need basis, you wouldn't have to hire them for ninety hours or a hundred hours a week.
Just tell me how that works. We have a special number?
Example, I'll be honest with you right now. We all, as a city staff, as a council, and as our community outreach people, we know when we have quality of life issues in our city. And those quality of life issues could be addressed by simply having the recommended private security come out and take care of it on an as-need basis. In other words, there's no reason to have set them out of time because there's times when absolutely nothing happens. But there are times when we're not getting the ability because we're either, I mean, our own sheriff's department predicted this. They said that once Proposition Thirty-Six passed, there would be an increase in crime, not only in Stanton, but our surrounding cities. Number two, we also have...
I thought it was going to go down, Proposition Thirty-Six.
No, when you, when you come out and start enforcing the law, you have more reaction or more cause for sheriff, more calls to the sheriff because they can now enforce the law.
I got it now. I see where you're coming from.
And then also eighty to eighty-five percent of our community now has private security.
Business...
That private security is taking them into our public right-of-way, which is increasing the number of quality of issue on our street sidewalks, okay? I'm just saying that after listening to what you folks were talking about cost-wise, if you just have private security available to take care of those quality of life issues, when they come up to address them, where our sheriff's department, it's going to be a point where this goes away. But I think it helps not only our sheriff's department, but it helps our public safety to a point of where we can supplement what's going on in our community. And I think that's what the whole idea of having the private security helping assist in those areas of quality of life issues. That's all.
Well, how, let's see if there's a quality of life issue out there.
I beg your pardon?
Say, there's a quality of life issue in Holonback Park. Somebody to come out. Our residents will have this number, or how does this work?
Well, they'll have to, well, whoever, if you decide to go with this, you have to set up a way in which there's a communication. You either call City Hall, you call directly to the service, or you call your local council member. Hey, I'm telling you right now, I'm not, I just want to tell you something, Gary, see, no. Every day, I get inundated with calls on quality of life issues. Everybody sitting here that I'm aware of also gets those same calls. In fact, I get probably an enormous amount of them because I cover the whole city.
And you give your number out.
And I just refer, I just refer them to the Orange County Sheriff's Department dispatch. Now, if our people are taking care of the crime and the one, two, three level calls, they're unable to take care of the other ones. I don't see this happening forever because at some point, we'll be able to get down to where we can address the quality of life issues, which are lower on the response table. And that's, that's, I think, what council member is talking about.
But theoretically, with the extra deputies, we should increase, we should decrease our response times. I know what's going to happen is it's going to be an accident. And like you said today, eight or nine calls, if we have six cars, let's say, will be all at that one big incident. I mean, a fire, a shooting, something like that, and the other calls won't get answered. I understand that.
You just asked me how we could afford it. I'm just giving you some idea. That's all.
Okay. I just don't see how, at the middle of the night, if a resident sees a problem, how they're going to know to call our security or whatever.
We'll have to set up a system for that, Gary. And I'll tell you...
We already have existing...
And by the way, I do not, I do not, I do not want our city employees out in this town at night.
Okay.
I would totally be opposed to that.
So, being in the city all my life, I've noticed that Stanton residents like effective law enforcement that have rights, that have regard for their rights. And I think that if we would get security enforcement, what we would be doing is not getting the best. We would be getting lackluster training. We would be getting a lower quality of service that, right now, our sheriff provides that a security company could never provide. And, I don't know, I just, I, I mean, I see this, you guys want to issue an RFP, but we haven't even had staff analysis yet. I feel like we're jumping the gun and we can't even mention what metrics we should look for when it comes to success of this program. And I'm really worried that, like I said, we're jumping the gun. If there's any citizen's arrest, I know that the sheriffs would have to take their time more, take more time to cautiously make sure that whatever citizen's arrest took place is actually verifiable. Because if not, then the city and the sheriffs would be subject to litigation. Well, they could, citizens arrests have happened, and they can't arrest people, but it...
Not do a citizen's arrest.
If somebody chooses to do citizen's arrest, we can't stop them.
Well, hopefully, we'll, the guards will be willing and trained to do that.
Well, they don't have appropriate training, and that's what I'm talking about, is that that's, that's litigation that we'd be open to.
If they're properly trained and follow our guidelines that we set forth, I don't see that becoming an issue.
Well, we have no oversight over a private security company. If they choose to say no, then, then they don't have to. And then also, we have state laws to ensure that our officers have a standard of training compared to a private company that could offer whatever training there is.
Why don't you make a motion? I want to hear from John, I'm sure.
Hey, John.
Yeah, I'm in the corner.
Hi.
Hello. So, on this matter, I mean, any personnel that would be assigned to this would be under our public safety department. And, I mean, we'd be putting that job on Director Ren to, you know, make sure that they're doing their job. You know, one thing I've heard often in regards to, you know, dealing with people out there in the community is that this is an opportunity where a first interaction could be with an individual that does not have a gun. To the extent that our personnel do not typically work overnight and...
Well, the sheriffs do.
Well, the sheriffs do, yes. I mean, they absolutely do. But this still gives a constant presence in the community when during daytime, we don't have that presence. I mean, for instance, at certain, at certain times of the year...
Presence besides the officers do we have during daytime, just our, our code enforcement?
For instance, you know, Garden Grove, right now, is currently looking at RFP for patrol, security in lieu of a park ranger. And that's a, that's not a daylight job. That's a nighttime job where they're ensuring that no one, absolutely anyone, is in a park. And for instance, I have personal experience with that. Yes, with Anaheim PD, I was eating pizza with friends in a park, and Anaheim PD told me to leave. And you know what? That's the rules. And Anaheim, I mean, to that similar extent, Anaheim's exercised using private security in the past for their parks. It's come up in a lot of circles. I mean, we're all, we're not talking about tourism here. Anaheim implements private security for their Tourism Improvement District, Garden Grove's Improvement District, Buena Parks Improvement District. All of them exercise it, and that's actually, but in that circumstance, that would be private business owners funding it in lieu of, you know, being able to use that money for other uses. I think in many ways, it's helpful to have this presence. I remember having supported this item when it came up previously, but I think at that time, I was the only one that supported it. But I absolutely want to recognize the, you know, the criticisms that were brought up here. I think there's a due diligence that needs to be done here to make sure there's a quality service. There's, I mean, really, a kind of a Pandora's box in terms of opening up how many opportunities you can say you want people to operate in, like what kind of equipment they have when they're on them. You know, what kind of reporting are they doing? You know, that was coming up. You know, typically with a walking security, they would have a D-TAC. They put, those are just located on a pole. They scan it. And that way, their boss knows that that guy was at that point during that time of night, had made his rounds and hit all the points within a certain timeframe. And that's how they're able to validate that they were able to do the rounds. There's, there's a lot of ways to...
How would you do that? Put on light posts or something around the city?
Even take photos with timestamps to be able to cooperate, saying that they visited this point, this point, this point, at this point, effectively, with a timestamp photo. There's a few different ways to do it. But one thing I would almost want to recommend is actually taking the time to settle this with, for instance, like an ad hoc committee and really be able to have the time, you know, give staff the time to figure out how we want to go about this, iron out some of the kinks, and make something that everybody feels comfortable with. I'm a little concerned trying to legislate this from the dais in considering all the variable factors that might be considered in implementing something like this. We know it works when it works. We know it doesn't work when it doesn't work. It could either be a golden goose or an ugly duckling. And it's a matter of getting it right. And there's been times where cities haven't gotten it right, and they were extremely dissatisfied with their service. And there's other times where cities were happy with their service and, you know, may have continued it. But I think as a, effectively a pilot program, similar again to what Garden Grove's doing, it might be worth trying it. I mean, right now, yeah, the money might not be necessarily in the bank, but we are facing issues in the community. For instance, in my district, I have several vacant properties and that we would love for somebody to be able to develop. And, you know, we have that coming up in the future regarding what we're going to do with vacant properties. We just lost Food for Less, but we know what happened with Food for Less generally is that their property owner wasn't taking care of their own property, allowing issues to fester and making people feel uncomfortable, thus it becoming an unprofitable store and being cut when Kroger decided to cut sixty locations in the United States. So, I think there's definitely some merits here, but I agree with the criticism that if we're going to exercise something like this, we want to do it. if we're going to exercise something, exercise something like this, we want to do it right.
Okay. You obviously have three votes for it, so there's no question about that. It's just, why don't you make a motion, and let's see what happens? Unless anybody else wants to get into this again?
I mean, I'm...
I'm getting tired.
I, I agree with you. I'm just worried that in the future, we're going to be picking private security over community service programs. You know, we, we have that deficit, and we already do our best to try to protect these programs. The last thing I'd want to do is try something new and turn that in for something that actually helps the community.
And I think you ought to just let the sheriffs do their job and get better at their job, and if we actually needed more specific things, I think it would be smarter to talk to our chief of police about how we fix this rather than then go outside and bring in people that we don't know too much about, and it's going to cost us a lot more money. Because I think, I think the city looks a whole lot better the last two months. I just see it all the time, and I see problems all the time. But I mean, you're going to have that when you got Beach Boulevard, and you're a low-income city. It's never going to be perfect. If you guys are looking for perfection, it's never going to be there. You can have a, you can actually have an officer in every corridor that would be there. New York does that, and it doesn't work.
So, I want to make a motion to, for us to issue an RFP for temporary private security services.
Before we do, I've asked the chief if he would come up. I would like to, he's listened to the discussion, and I would like to have an opportunity to give comments on what we just talked about. Thank you, chief. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Sorry, I'm... Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So, listening to this evening's conversation, I just wanted to shed some light and give you some facts about Orange County Sheriff's Law Enforcement. Every deputy sheriff is required to attend 984 hours of post-required training. That's mandated by the state of California to receive their badge. In addition, OCSD deputies must complete four months of field training in the city that they are assigned to. So, when a deputy graduates the academy, six months of training, they go to their jail career. When they become assigned to the city of Stanton, they continue getting four additional months of patrol training in the city of Stanton. Deputies must also receive continued training throughout their careers. This is ongoing required state training as well as in-house training required by Sheriff Don Barnes. This training includes, but is not limited to firearms training, arrest and control techniques, CIT training, which is crisis intervention, intervention training, narcotics identification and proper handling, and laws of arrest. This combined specialized training is designed to provide each deputy with, excuse me, each deputy assigned to the city of Stanton the tools to successfully navigate potential issues when initiating a contact or responding to a call for service. The state of California does not hold private security to the same standards of training as they do law enforcement. This can create potentially dangerous scenarios when security may encounter a subject or violent person, which would then require Orange County Sheriff's Department deputies to respond, to handle the situation, taking us away from potentially other valuable calls, saving lives, wherever we're at in the field that, that evening, or afternoon, excuse me. And finally, there's the potential of liability for the city. Currently, as the contracted law enforcement service for the city, OCSD is responsible for the actions taken by the deputies in the course of their duties. The city is not. I don't know what happens when the city goes into a contract with a security company and what liabilities the city may or may not see. I can't speak to that. But with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, understand that our deputies are trained to handle people, whether it's criminal activity, quality of life issues, they are highly trained individuals that you will not find in a security company. So, with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, chief. Just a couple of thoughts. We, I'm real aware of the fact that we heard from the Sheriff's Department office that once Proposition 36 passed, there would be an increase in the amount of time that the Sheriff's Department would be dealing with certain investigations, response to crimes that we were never prosecuting or able to prosecute before or enforce. That being said, recently, I think it was June 1st or July 1st, you started?
Although the contract officially started July 1st, I would say our current staffing model was in place by about June, or I'm sorry, July 9th or 10th.
Okay. So, you know, we did, we did go ahead and take the recommendations of the Sheriff's Department through operations, and we, I think it was about $1.6 million invested in hiring six new deputies, of which one we're very grateful for was a motor officer. During that period of time, we have seen a influx of quality of issue crimes, or not crimes, but violations, which has provided some of our areas of our community with unsafe environment.
I, I would, I would, I would ask that you actually look at that in, in a different, in a different light. I believe I reported two weeks ago on our progress that we have made since the contract went into effect. And I would challenge you to say that the landscape of this city has changed, and the effectiveness of the Orange County Sheriff's Department has been very, very well-known and made, it, it has been effective, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And where did we get that report?
I reported on this two weeks ago. Our response times are down, and yes, with Prop 36 and additional deputies, Prop 36 going into effect has made a citable offense where if we were on the third site with an individual for certain violations of law, it actually gave us the ability to make an arrest. So, yes, we have arrested several people throughout the city regardless of their quality of life or their, or wherever they're at, but we have made great stride in a very short time in this city, as far as I'm concerned.
One of the other concerns was the, that we have seen an influx in certain areas of the community of people that have been affecting the quality of life of our residents. We, as was stated here, you know, perfection is never going to probably be attained, but do you see it peaking, having a high point? Is there going to be a median point? A look, what's your projection on the future of the direction in which you're going? And how is the plan that you put into effect working? And what does the future look like for us?
Mr. Mayor, as I reported last two weeks ago, we gave the city over 1,800 hours of additional non-build service to be effective in the city. And we will continue to work with the staffing model that we have, that when we added the additional deputies, to continue to have an impact on quality of life and criminal activity throughout the city of Stanton. I cannot give you a, a direct timeline of when it might meet your measure of success versus, versus our measure of success, but we are being successful every day in this. We did not get into this predicament overnight in quality of life or in criminal activity. Those are things that people need to vote on in Sacramento, as we have all stated before. And so, we are working effectively within the bounds of the law and within the policies and procedures of the Sheriff's Department to be effective in the city of Stanton.
One of the, one of the concerns that I get from the community, and also from the leadership, and also other outlets, is that we keep seeing the same individuals repeatedly violating our ordinances over and over and over again. Is there a mechanism to where, I think that's probably the main issue right now, is there a mechanism to where we can resolve that type of, of concern?
We do cite individuals for the Stanton municipal codes, and we do cite them for misdemeanors that might not directly result in an arrest.
Okay. Do we have a breakdown of, of those, those issues that have been done, have they been, do they go to our city attorney?
So, every two weeks, I send out a report to the council for all arrest activity, and then the, the Orange County Sheriff's Department sends separate reports to the city attorney and the Orange County DA's office for prosecution, but I do provide a report every two weeks to the council.
So, the quality of life issues are basically sent to the, their misdemeanors, or, I mean, their citation. How many citations have we received?
In the last two-week period, it was 50, and the two weeks before that, it was 64 arrests.
No, no, I'm talking about, our city attorney prosecutes our, our citations. How many citations have we received?
So, I think in the last month, those come to me on a monthly basis, and I think in the last month, it was less than a dozen. And we, we currently are not prosecuting every single one. It needs to be reviewed.
Right. So, the city attorney's office, mayor and council reviews the list of citations. We have prosecutorial discretion essentially to, to go ahead and prosecute those. So, our litigator looks at them carefully and reviews each file, and, you know, for the ones that rise to the level of having the proper documentation and so on and so forth, the city attorney's office does prosecute.
So, it's, excuse me, first...
Let me correct my number, because I, I just opened up the email, so the, for the month of August, there were 28.
Okay. So, so basically, over a long period of time, which has been about, what, six weeks?
About.
So, we hear about one a week, right? I mean, that's just, I'm not saying that's right, I'm not saying that's wrong, but yet...
One a week.
Okay. Citation.
But we've had 200 arrests, probably about.
Talking about quality of life citations.
But I just want to correct, I want to offer up, the arrests are also quality of life issues.
I understand, but I'm talking about citations. We've given 26 citations, and, you know, and the period, the thing is, is it looks like a catch 22. Number one, we're not getting a lot of citations written, that's number one, and number two, we're not prosecuting them. And to me, that's the problem, because if we're not, if we're not issuing citations and we're not prosecuting them, then it's going to be very difficult to take care of some of the problems that we have in the city. Is there a solution to that, chief?
I would like to add, from the city manager's position, there's a reason why we are not prosecuting them, and I, I don't necessarily want to go into detail.
Okay. And we all know why, we, you have this point, we understand that completely.
Okay.
But if you have a minimum, I'm just saying, it's a cause and effect. For whatever reason, we don't prosecute, that's fine, but if we don't have citations being issued, then we, I mean, to me, it's sort of a breakdown in the system. I don't know what it is, but I, I figured that there was something that might have been causing that. I don't know.
And I would also like to offer something that the council had, had me look at a couple years ago that we're now revisiting, is moving prosecution responsibilities away from the city attorney and back to the Orange County DA. I spoke with the Orange County DA's office, most recently today, I've been in conversations with them over the last few weeks, and since the last, when the council last had me look into this, it was about three years ago. And based on the services that the Orange County DA's office was offering at the time, I thought it was best for us to continue to stay with the city attorney. And talking to the DA now, they have implemented a number of additional strategies. They were sharing me, sharing with me today that the DA's office has implemented basically a nuisance attorney who specifically deals with quality of life and public nuisance types activities. They call it their vertical strategy, I forget, there's another term for it. So, she was explaining to me that tool. They also work very closely with the Orange County Sheriff's Department in other cities. They have a recidivism dedicated attorney who works with high-frequency individuals found in cities, and they help the, they work in partnership with law enforcement and code enforcement to identify these individuals, and then if the individual's willing to take diversion into substance abuse programs or other types of treatment or support services, they have that option, but they build the case around it to show the individual, well, there's either this path, or there's the path of X number of citations. So, I was very impressed with the new strategies and tools the DA's office has implemented since the last time I spoke with them. And so, at, at this time, I'm working with them to get a proposed contract, and it would be about comparable to what we're currently spending with the city attorney's office with a slew of different tools.
Well, you know, to me, I want to be very supportive of the Sheriff's Department. It's, it's really hard for an officer or a deputy to be out in the field and to take the time to address some of the lower negative activity or the ordinance violations that we have, and then nothing happens. It's like the way we used to be, where you just do it over and over again, and there's no results. I like the idea of maybe working with the DA. That way, if a deputy writes a citation, he knows he's not wasting his time, and I think that's a good way to support him. As you know, chief, you know, one of the things that we agreed to was the fact that we went ahead and took your new formula and hired the deputies that you requested us to hire. There was an expectation that we, through doing that, that at some point, we would be able to get better coverage and more enforcement on some of our quality of life issues. Those assurances, I'm sure they're still in place. Do you have any way in which we can continue to move forward and progress at maybe a quicker pace or something else that we can do?
What are you referring to as a quicker pace? I, I don't understand.
Well, as an example, would you, you see, to me, what's the point of issuing a citation if nobody does anything with it? But if we can control the environment, I think that helps. I'll leave it at that.
Pierce, if you don't mind if I just add, I just want to clarify, I think part of the basis of this conversation was starting with the, when I was asked how many citations were written in the month of August, and I responded 28, which was correct, and then a statistic was given out that that's about one every week or something, but I wanted to clarify that I went back to July 1st, which if we want to measure the Sheriff's Department staffing, there's actually 89 citations written in that two-month period. So, please don't rely on the 28, which was only for the month of August, and that's because I think we had the 1,800 extra hours of Sheriff's Department services. So, I just want to clarify that if we're basing some of this conversation on the original 28 that I gave, that was only for a four-week period, and to accurately look at the full period, since the Sheriff's Department staffing has changed its 89 citations.
And what's the category?
For July, okay, for July, 31, public nudity, two drinking in public, 18 unlawful camping, six pedestrians prohibited on street median islands, two smoking prohibited in the parks, one illegal crossing of a crosswalk, one private property trespass, and then In August, 12 public nudity, two drinking in public, four on street median islands, four unlawful camping, one fireworks, four public property trespassing after hours, parks and recreational facilities, and one crosswalk.
Okay. Chief, what is the threshold for arrest on the number of citations issued to an individual? Is there any?
That is, that is very dependent on what circumstances are happening at that, at that moment. So, there's misdemeanor, cite and release that takes effect. A lot of these citations were issued, but you got to understand, too, that in the first month, in the month of July, when I reported, we had over 100 physical arrests. So, just because we're in contact with somebody doesn't mean that we don't, they may get issued a citation and released there on the scene, but we made over 100 physical arrests in that month as well. So, I think the numbers speak for themselves as far as we had that many contacts with people throughout the city regardless and affected a law enforcement action.
Isn't it, though, if they get so many tickets and they don't pay them or something, doesn't a war... doesn't a warrant eventually get issued?
And that depends on the courts and when they issue the warrant and it depends on what it's for.
It should kind of work that way.
But if we don't contact that person again for many, many months and they took care of it, then they took care of it. That proportion of it's on the courts.
That's the way it works on a lot of those misdemeanors. We don't lock everybody, unfortunately.
I'll get back to, to, Donald, not Donald, go ahead. Pierce, sorry.
So there was a motion on the floor to issue an RFP before we do a second and a roll call vote. To issue an RFP, I do need a little more detail. So I would like, I need clarification so that the firms know what they're, what they're proposing on. So I need specifics in relation to what days of the week and what hours and how many we would want.
Okay. I'm calling a three-month temporary.
Okay.
And then a daily week.
And then specifically, what days of the week?
Six to Sunday the sixth. Six-hour floater day as needed of staff.
Is that 6:00 AM Sunday?
No, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM Sunday?
Yeah.
6:00 PM Thursday to 6:00 PM Sunday.
Correct.
So 72 hours?
Correct.
And one additional six-hour shift sometime in the week for a total of 78 hours? And is this one security guard or two?
Yeah, one.
Because I hear the concerns of our, my fellow council members as far as cost and I'm, I agree with them at cost.
Okay. So three months from Thursday at 6:00 PM to Sunday at 6:00 PM, one security guard. I believe based on the shift hours, they'll have to take lunches and breaks. Would you want me to include in the proposal that they have to send somebody to relieve the person for their lunch and breaks, which will be an additional cost, or that we won't have service during the lunch and breaks?
We won't have service for that.
Okay? And confirming, are they to ever step out of their vehicle and engage or are they to stay in their vehicle?
I want them to stay in the vehicle.
At all times?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe I heard unarmed?
Correct.
But you would, the council wants them to have pepper spray or?
For their own safety, pepper spray? I don't think them getting, I don't, with them not getting out of the vehicle, I don't, I just want for something for them to protect themselves.
And I heard, council member, as you were sharing your initial thoughts, there was mention of body-worn cameras. Is that something that you would want to include in the scope of services?
If it's additional cost, no.
I think I have enough to put together a scope of services if this gets enough support from the council. Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Barrios, seconded by council member Warren. I'll now proceed with the roll call vote. Council member Warren?
Excuse me? Yes.
I'm wondering if the maker of the motion would allow me to make an amendment?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to recommend that we take the action that you did, that you just came up with and that we adopt the RFP, okay? But we don't put it out yet. We just bring the RFP back so we get a chance to take a look at it. We get a chance to review it and half-staff, make a presentation on it, but don't send the RFP out. If that's okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So that'd be my substitute motion.
Is there a second for the substitute motion?
Thank you for a substitute motion by Mayor Chauvin, seconded by council member Warren. I will now proceed to the roll call vote. Council member Warren?
Aye.
Council member Barrios?
Yes.
Council member Taylor?
No.
Council, Mayor Potem Torres?
I'm sitting.
And Mayor Chauvin? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can now move on to item 16.
Okay. We are now at, attorney.
Thank you, mayor. I have no items.
I see, ma'am.
Sure.
I'd like to ask community services directors, Anya Bobadia, just to talk briefly about our website transition so users to our website know what to expect.
Thank you, mayor and council. As mentioned earlier, we transitioned today with the refresh of the website, same wonderful programs and information, new look. And we are looking for feedback, so there is an alert on the homepage for residents to provide feedback if there's any other resources or recommendations. Thank you.
Some of the buttons aren't working.
We are working through some cases.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you know.
Yes. And please feel free, if you run into any of those, please let me know. Sometimes we're aware and we're happy to, we're happy to review.
I got to where I want you to be. And it's, I love the colors and everything. It looks great.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now going to hear from the Orange County Fire Authority.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff. It's my pleasure to provide the following OCFA operational report for the month of August of 2025. The OCFA responded to a total of 359 incidents within the city during the month of August 2025. Those emergencies consisted of eight fires, 295 medical aides, 38 traffic collisions, and 18 hazardous condition calls and other calls for service. The OCFA responded to a total of 14 incidents within unincorporated Orange County serviced by engine and medic squad 46 during the month of August. Those 14 incidents consisted of two fires, 11 medical aides, and one hazardous conditions call for service. Some of the community events within the August of 2025 was on Friday, August 8th, B-shift, Division Chief Sheets, Battalion 8, Engine 46, Medic 46, and community educator Cheryl Whitney participated in Stanton's National Night Out event. Some upcoming events and current events within Orange County. Orange County Fire Authority will be holding its annual 9/11 memorial on Thursday, September 11th, 2025, at our Regional Fire Operation and Training Center located at One Fire Authority Road, Irvine. Also additionally, every fire station. So Station 46 will be doing the same thing. So if you were around, if unable to make it, we do on 5 Bravo at certain times when the planes hit and when the, when the towers fell, we will be out there at attention. So if you've never been able to be part of that, it's pretty somber. It's a pretty, pretty neat event to attend. Additionally, Orange County Fire Authority Girls Empowerment Camp will be held Saturday, September 13th, and Sunday, September 14th of this month from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This concludes my, this concludes Orange County Fire Authority's operational report for August, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for the chief? If you are-
Interesting, going to the 911, you need to make your reservations. It's usually pretty crowded, but they'll accommodate you parking-wise, okay? Is there any other business before the council at this time? I'll adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting.